Hi, Tessa.
Hi, good evening.
Well, we've made it.
Yep.
So, how are you?
I'm good. Just a heads up, Michael, well, first off, I was spelling his last name wrong in the minutes. But also, he's gonna, he'll tell you when it gets to that part of the meeting, but he's gonna recommend that we don't approve the minutes because I guess there's substantial edits that he found. So.
On which one?
The ones that I wrote, so the ones from last meeting. Which I can understand. I, I'm still familiarizing myself with planning terms, so I'm, I'm sure there's places where I wasn't explaining things the way that makes sense with the way those terms are supposed to be used and.
Yeah.
Well, he'll, I'm sure he'll explain his thoughts when we get to that part of the agenda.
Right, right, right. So. I called the Registry of Deeds today because, I mean, assuming we pass the, the, assuming we vote to authorize a single member to sign off on plans, we have to write a, we have to write a note to the Registry of Deeds.
Yes.
And the main thing I found out when I talked to the woman there was that we'll have to do it on town letterhead.
I mean, that makes sense because I think we have to get it first certified, the vote certified by the town clerk or, and then, I think.
Okay, you may be ahead of me. I, I wasn't.
I think so. At least that was true for the Conservation Commission. I think they get a certificate from the Conservation Commission and then that.
And they were trying to create electronic signatures or designate somebody to sign?
Electronic signatures, so it might be a slightly different process.
Yeah, because I didn't, I didn't read, I, I didn't catch that part.
Okay, I can, yeah, I have, I have it open or minimized, the, that document.
I, I saw you sent that out, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I have it right in front of me.
As do I.
Oh, I see. The board can accomplish this by a vote at a properly noticed meeting followed by a letter of notice to the registry. The procedure here is similar to the process described in Section B, so, Section B. Yeah, they say the process is similar to electronic signature process. Yeah, the, which step two is the certificate of votes is signed, notarized, and certified by the city town clerk.
Okay, well. Yeah.
So I can screen share that.
We'll need to, well, my guess is that, 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 uh, that that's a detail that we can work through tomorrow.
Right, the town clerk doesn't have to be on this call.
No, no, but I mean, I mean, but the, the note will have to be, the, the notice will have to be written.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have to have the notice written today, um, tonight. It just, the vote has to happen.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi, Nathan.
What's going on, Deacon? How are you?
I'm good, I'm good. Enjoying the weather, I, I go.
It has been nice.
It really has. I, I. I'm hoping I can cut some wood tomorrow. That'd be nice.
Nice. I've been, uh, doing a little bit of that myself.
Yeah, yeah. Cordwood?
Yeah.
Yeah, how much land do you have?
Um, two, two and a half acres. But, uh, you know, there was someone down in Palom on North Valley Road and had a big oak came down, so I've been actually going down there and taking pieces of that. Borrowed my father's truck a little bit, grabbed a couple of those that way.
Great, great, great.
I think, you know, between, somewhere between one and two cords there probably, so, and for free.
From one tree?
No, so, I mean, it was one big tree and then took down a couple other ones with it. I mean, I, I might be overestimating too. I'm sure it's at least one cord, but, um.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. It's a real big tree that has a cord in it.
Is that right?
Real big tree, yeah.
This tree was, I mean, it was kind of like a double stump, the big one, and I was looking at one of them, it was about eighty years old.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't know. It might be a little, we'll see. I'll let you know once I get it all split and stacked.
Yeah, I can't remember the, I can't remember the, the math, but one of my books, one of my books estimates the, how much of a cord a, a tree of a particular diameter is, but it's, you gotta get right up there before, you gotta get up in the twenties before you have a cord for a stem.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, I think, uh, this is, this is getting into the twenties at the, at the base, and, you know, like I said, it was kind of like.
The diameter is measured at, at breast height, they call it DBH.
Ah, okay.
That's how you, I mean, because there's a, because there's a butt swell below.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Interesting, yeah. No, I've got a lot to learn, I'll tell you what.
Hi, Michael.
Hey, Deacon, how you doing?
I'm all right. We're just talking cordwood.
Michael, how are you? Yeah.
Are you burning, you have a wood stove or are you burning?
Yeah, I have a wood stove.
Yeah, we, we have, we have, we have a central wood furnace.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, we had that when we first moved in and, uh, now I've got oil for regular heat, but we just use the wood stove most, like eighty percent of the time at least.
Yeah, we have a, we have a furnace that's, uh, it's a combination. It, it can burn, it, it burns both wood and, um, and oil, and we, we don't use the oil, but we have it as a backup. But so, that way it's legal to have just one flue.
Oh, interesting, interesting. Otherwise you have to have a separate one?
Yeah, if you have two furnaces, you have to have two flues, but, but this is, I, I think this is a workaround on the, on the regular.
Jeff, is your beard getting bigger and bigger by the day?
A little bit.
I just trimmed it, I just trimmed it yesterday. I cleaned up one of my horse clippers and right through there.
You could have been ruder if you'd noted how white it was.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking of getting a little Grecian formula to kind of. I, I kind of envy Michael. And Nathan.
I think.
Both have nice dark beards. I love it.
Oh, thank you. Um, Linda, is that you asking if your audio is working? Because I was, oh, she just left.
Was Linda here and gone?
Yeah, briefly.
Steve's supposed to be joining us tonight, isn't he?
I, I've not heard one way or another.
He's, he's certainly been texting me like crazy here, so.
Well, uh.
He's definitely out there in the.
Well, if we were to start, if, if we were to start now, I could read the governor's announcement and get past public comment without difficulty.
Let's go.
Go for it.
Okay, so, the meeting is starting. Following the governor's restrictions on public meetings, this meeting is being held virtually using zoom.com for remote participation. Public may access it following the instructions on this meeting's agenda posted on the town calendar. If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access, the public can request a recording of this meeting by contacting clerk. Okay. And so we can cross off public comment. I don't, I don't see that Ayers Hall or, or the surveyor is here.
Well, we have a Henry connecting.
Oh, yep.
That's right. That's right.
And then we have Bob. Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah, so we're good.
I, Steve is coming. Well, I hope he's coming.
Yeah.
Let, let me text him, make sure he knows what we're doing here.
Okay, okay.
Hey, Tessa, no worries about the name.
I do apologize.
It's the story of my life. Don't worry about it. You should see the mail.
Well, I'll do better.
Yeah, I, I'll give you a very brief story. When I lived in Boston with, in a group of, in a house, this group of people in my twenties, when we'd get a telemarketer to call and they would, they would say, that my, my roommate Amy would answer, they'd say, are you Mrs. DiChiario? And she would know it'd be a telemarketer because they always screw up the name, so.
Okay, so, um, why, why don't I skip over Ayers Hall to capital budget? Tessa spoke with Linda about this, and between them, they added capital budget to the menu. I haven't seen the request for the capital budget item. My, my sense is that the only capital budget request we've, we've ever made is for the, is for the, is for the map container. Um, I don't know that we actually, we, do we actually want to make a capital budget request?
So, Deacon, can I ask you a question just to clarify?
Please.
So, I know there's, you know, there's a, a capital something committee in town, which has representatives from all the other committees, which I'm guessing we don't have one, which is totally fine, but are they, are they the ones who are asking us if we have any capital needs? Is that the deal?
Well, I assume so. I haven't seen the document. I assume it's the capital budget committee.
Okay.
But I haven't.
If you want me to read out the, so I have the one here for the Conservation Commission, which is the same, it's the same form.
Okay.
There's a purple one for the regular budget and a yellow one for the capital budget. And I, if it would help, I can read out what it says. If that would, so.
Yeah, yeah, we're at sea.
Okay, so for the capital budget request for fiscal year 2020, to department heads and committee chairpersons, this year we are working with our capital planning and forecasting model. We're reviewing the spreadsheets now and will utilize this tool in improving our ability to plan in the future. We are starting with a form that requests more detail on all capital requests that you bring forward. We hope to continue making our process smoother and more productive. The capital budget request form is attached. If you now have a quest, request this year but are considering future requests, please let us know. And then it says, please return this by November twentieth, but I heard from Linda that that isn't a fixed deadline. That's.
Well, I mean, I mean, I, I don't know of any, I don't, I mean, is the, is there someone on the board who thinks we ought to be asking for something?
It was sent out to everybody.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, is there some, is there some interest in a capital purchase? I mean, I mean.
Well, um, uh, I, I'm not sure if it comes under capital, but, um, it, it would be, it would be great if, um, if as many members as possible attend the CPTC workshops and we have a budget to pay for them to go.
Yeah, that's not capital.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's on the agenda later.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't, I can't think of any capital needs that we would have.
We, we, we don't, we don't need very, very much physical stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Um, Linda thought you wouldn't need one. Um, the other one is the budget request, which I looked at the expense report Linda forwarded to me in the last year was four hundred and eighty-four dollars. So it'd be good to know whether the, uh, planning board wanted to increase that or keep it the same. Four hundred and eighty-four was the last.
Yeah, I mean, in the past, we, uh, we haven't made budget requests. The, uh, the finance committee has given us more money than, than we ever need, and then they put it into free cash.
Do they, do they just have a, um, uh, what's the word? Do they, they just sort of put aside money in case we need it? Because I guess that.
Yeah, because oddly, I mean, most of the money that we wind up spending is for, um, is for advertising and legal fees, which are, which, um, the legal fees, uh, don't even come out of our budget.
Yeah, that's the only thing that I was thinking about. I mean, I just anticipate, but, you know, that, given what we're hearing, that we'll, we'll probably have to use some, a lot of Donna's time.
My understanding, that doesn't have, that, the, the legal budget is, is different. I mean,
Yeah.
We don't budget for that.
Okay, and is the four hundred and change, is that training stuff to, to Jeff's, um, point? Because if we, if there was a cost of participating, you know, for registration, that would, it'd be nice if that was covered.
Well, it would certainly, I mean, it certainly come, the regular budget covers that.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, that isn't a lot of money for the trainings. I mean, it's twenty-five bucks here, twenty-five bucks there.
Yeah, and there's no travel.
Yeah, yeah. So, well, we should think about the, we should think about the budget, but I don't, but I don't think it's a big deal. I'll, we should, I'll put it on the, I'll put it on the agenda for next time.
To decide, okay.
Yeah, and, um, so, so Henry, are you, are you, um, is, are you ready? Are, are other people coming? I, I don't think Henry hears me.
Yeah, there we go.
Hey, greetings, everyone. Yeah, there are other folks gonna, are gonna show up, uh, around seven thirty, that was the plan, I guess.
Okay, okay.
I mean, if you like, we can get started.
Well, we can, if other people are coming, we can fill in with other stuff, right, Deacon?
Let's go to the, why don't we, why don't we go to the minutes?
Okay. So, I'll, I'll move to approve the minutes to September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Robert.
Okay, um, anybody want to talk about them?
They look good to me.
Okay.
The, the minutes continue to be prodigious, like Linda's. Great.
Well, these are the ones from the.
These are Lindas.
Okay, well.
This is the, the meeting that we have with the select board.
Okay.
When Nathan was selected.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, I'll call the roll. Are, are people ready for me to call the roll?
Sure.
Okay.
Say then.
I'm sorry?
And it's, the minutes are only being approved with reference to that portion of the minutes that pertain to the, uh, planning board.
Yes, yes. Okay, um, so, uh, starting at the top right of my screen, uh, Nathan?
Hi.
Okay. Jeff?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Uh, Robert?
Hi.
Linda?
I was not there.
Okay, well, we've got the votes, so, that's an abstain, okay.
Abstain.
Okay, and Steve?
Yes.
Okay, and I, and I'm an I. Okay, let's move on to the, uh, ones from October nineteen.
Okay, I'll move to approve the minutes of October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Uh, second?
So, I had a question, I think.
Let's go. Linda, did you nod your head to second? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Yeah, I had, I guess, a question for you, Deacon. I mean, there's one, one edit throughout that I, I told Tessa, she just misspelled my last name, so that's, she can just fix those, that's not a big deal. I guess the question is, um, in the last couple of meetings, we talked about just discussing, um, changes during the meeting as opposed to, like, what I used to do is email them to Linda, she changed them, and then we talk about them. So, I have a few. Do you want me to just go through them quickly?
Please.
As I mentioned, um, I have printed out the minutes because I anticipated that this being my first time and the, and the length of them that I would, there would be edited, so I printed out the draft, so you can tell me exactly what page where, and I will write down exactly what the correction is.
Cool, and I would say overall there, you know, these are hard meetings, and that was a hard meeting, so these are, these are just small, small things. Um, on page three.
We just got there. Yep, I'm with you.
Just, uh, it's probably a third of the way down the line that starts with battery storage?
Yes.
I think that's just the typo. It should be built, purposely built oversized, it's supposed to build oversized at the very end.
Okay, built, yep.
And then I think, uh, maybe like ten lines from the bottom, it says, per Lacy Paul Jones left the area out.
Yep.
I, I'd leave it to, to Jeff, but it seems like if you don't know what's going on there, it might just be worth, like, I think my general comment is some of this stuff.
Should be striped.
Uh, well, it's just a little, the context is there, so I, I can read into that what I think Jeff was saying, which is that there was an area in the Paul Jones Conservation Area that was left out for development, but you wouldn't necessarily know that from the way it was written. Is that correct, Jeff? That that's the, what you were trying to get to?
I think so, because she did leave out some areas. Um, where were we talking about?
Uh, the Carver.
It's page three, um, close to the bottom. Per Lacy Paul Jones left area out of conservation area. Lots of water swamp and Carver area and, and water is a water supply source.
I thought that was, I thought that, I thought they left, that was the one at the intersect, near the intersection of Montague and Leverett.
That's what I think it was, too. Sort of behind, um, Penny Kim's house, round in there.
Yeah.
They, they left that out, um, thinking that that would be a town water supply source. Now, is, is that the area of land that we were talking about?
Well, I'm not sure. I mean, I think what I was gonna suggest, if it's okay with Deacon, is maybe we don't try to approve them these minutes tonight. Because, you know, when I, I wrote an email to Tessa, my thinking was, given that a lot of this meeting is about that solar presentation and meetings going forward, discussions about this stuff will be coming up, that it feels like we want to make sure that what we're saying is both, has the right context, so we know what we're saying, and then that it's, it feels like we're getting to the point that we want to because someone is gonna go back and look at this and say, oh, they said blah, 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 and we're gonna want to know what we said. So, it might be worth, I mean, I had a couple other things if we don't want to, but that was my general sense, that they weren't technically wrong, but they were maybe a little thin on meaning.
Um, well, I'm, I'm, I, I don't have that document in front of me, so I can't really put it in context.
Yeah.
I do know that areas were left out. Cindy talked to me about areas that were, she was leaving out and why she was leaving them out at the time, so. Depends on what we were talking about.
Yeah. Well, I think.
It, it, it wouldn't be Carver Road, that was not part of the Paul Jones, um, area, but the place that Deacon described, sort of in the crook between, um, Montague Road and Leverett Road, yes, they left a chunk out purposely there. So if that's what we were talking about, then what I said was correct.
That's how I under, that's how I understood it as well, Jeff.
Yeah.
That it was down there.
Yeah, yeah, my recommendation is, Jeff, not that you had to figure out what you said right now, but rather we give ourselves until next month and maybe look through it and see if there's things that are written here that would benefit from either more information or, or, or context. You know, I, I'll give you another example just briefly. So, Tessa, on page four.
Yep.
Sort of smack in the middle, um, it starts with me, per DiChiara, solar companies have better rules. You see that?
Oh, yep.
And so, my, my point was, if I were to edit it, I would say, solar companies have bed, um, have better ratings in the smart program if working with towns, they get a competitive advantage. So it's, it's that the rules of the programs are set up that if they're working with the municipality, they get extra points and considerations, so we can, I, you know, we can make the change now, but I think, just if I read it through a little bit more and we figure out a, a way that's acceptable to the committee, because I think rules, it's easily misunderstood.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure, this hasn't come up before, so I wasn't sure the procedure.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's all new for you.
Of, of how this works from there, if, if board members are allowed to send me edits and then I redraft the minutes and those are, are, are either approved or edited again at the next meeting.
And I think, I think that at a previous meeting, we, we. Okay, well, it seems to me that what we're talking about, what we're talking about is. Is getting, is looking at, looking at the, at the minutes, figuring out where they, where they need to be improved, and, and really coming back with being, with the ability to talk about them, because. In previous meetings, we've, we've talked about not changing anything of substance outside the meeting.
Right, and I, which I respect, I mean, I think. We could send it to you as the chair, you know, and you could sort of take the, the comments and send them to, to Tessa, or something like that, I just don't want to take up all the time here going through them, but I'm just, I'm worried. Given that we have a busy year of special permits, that, you know, the information is accurate.
Well, let's, I mean. Let's just figure out how, how we were gonna do this, because maybe what we do, maybe what we do, it is. Is, is send to Tessa items of concern, and then she can make a, she can make a list of the, there can be a list of the items of concern, and that list can be available for, for people before the next meeting, is that good?
That works, I mean, because Tessa's not a member of the committee, so it's not breaking open meeting law in that regard. We just.
And if they're not, and if they're not being changed before the next meeting, I don't see what the, what, how there's any harm.
Great, okay. Cool, so, so, I think we can all do that, I'll definitely, I'll just go through it and send stuff to Tessa, and you can note them.
I can do that.
Because this, this is all pretty hard virtually.
Thank you for the, the time, I appreciate that.
Okay, so, so we'll, we'll do that one next time, too. Oh, Miriam's here. What, before we start on the Historical Commission, why don't we just go through this, why don't we talk very briefly about the CPTC workshops, Jeff?
Oh. You want me to talk about them?
Yeah, well, it was your email that caused me to put them on the list.
Okay, well, all I'll say is that they're great, and, I mean, that's the way Planning Board and Zoning Board members. Who are not, you know, in the profession can really get up to speed with what's going on in the. In the world of the Planning Board and the Zoning Board, even building inspectors attend these things. To learn more about zoning. So I would urge everyone to take these courses.
I, I, I did notice that there, that it's, it's a virtual schedule.
Yep.
I got that.
Yeah, usually there's a big conference in the spring at Holy Cross in Worcester, where we all go, but. Take them anywhere you can, the instructors are great, you know, they're, they're planners and lawyers that know their business and.
So, did everyone get that email that, that Jeff sent out, or should it be forwarded to everyone, anybody who didn't get it?
I think everyone got it, right?
Yeah.
And I would just say, I went my first year, you know, after talking to Jeff, I found it really helpful, I mean, the fact that it's actually virtual is sort of nice, because you don't have to spend the whole day there, you can sort of do little bits at a time, but. It was really helpful.
Well.
You miss, you know, you'll, you'll miss the lunch, which is always.
Well, ordinarily, they aren't, they aren't just at the, at the annual thing in Worcester, they're, they're held at various locations around the state, you know, of an evening, and you, you go and attend with local folks from the area. All right. So. So, so Mary, Miriam and Henry, are, are more people coming from the Historical Commission?
I don't know, hold on one sec.
Yeah.
I'm here, Miriam.
Oh, great. I thought that Janice, oh, here comes Janice.
There's Janice, okay.
Who else is on the line, I just heard a voice.
Mary Lo. Conca, C-O-N-C-A.
Thank you for the minutes.
Well, well, why don't, why don't we get started, why don't we get started on the Historical Commission's concern? You wanted to talk about the Historical Commission's input on special permits.
Henry, do you wanna do this? Henry's on mute.
Yeah.
I should know. When I'm on mute, I, I can zoom about six hours a day, so. Howdy, folks. How are you doing?
All right.
Great. Yeah, I, as Chair of the Shutsberry Historical Commission, I have a few prepared remarks. I'm sure you all got a chance to read my initial note, this is an expansion of that. So, the SHC, as we call it, would like to initiate a closer collaborative relationship with the Planning Board as it reviews special permit applications that require a review of historical and cultural resources. Our timely participation will help us fulfill our mission to gather data and expertise to advise the Planning Board about potential historical and cultural sites, our overall goal. Is to ensure that any evaluation of historical, cultural property, properties is appropriate, historically, archaeologically, and culturally, and to assist the landowner and Planning Board to meet the spirit of zoning bylaws, particularly in the areas of solar bylaw. What distinguishes the SHC from other town committees is that it has a mandate under the Mass General Law to fulfill specific functions, one, an important statutory role of the SHC is to routinely review and advise on development projects involving potential historical and cultural sites. Even when these projects are also evaluated by consultants engaged by the applicant or developer or the Planning Board. Another unique aspect of the SHC is that it conducts research as part of its mission, this is. Quite distinctive, I, I, I think, for a town commission. The SHC would like to know more about these projects as they get processed by the Planning Board, so that it can initiate an independent review, giving the SHC time to do the necessary research and consultation with relevant experts. In our advisory capacity, we would then submit our written findings to the Planning Board. The SHC is knowledgeable about the presence, particularly of local Native American ceremonial stone landscapes, or CSLs, as I will refer to them. The SHC also has the unique ability to gather information about cultural resources and maintain the confidentiality of sensitive sites with the goal of protecting them. In conjunction with the Mass Massachusetts Historical Society, the SHC has the capacity to maintain confidential records of archaeological sites. The town's zoning, zoning bylaw, solar zoning bylaw acknowledges the significance of CSLs. Most importantly, we wish to keep in mind that Shutsberry is located within the bounds of a pre-European ceremonial district that was determined by the federal government in 2008. Over the past three years, the SHC has gathered numerous peer-reviewed publications on CSLs and cultivated key contacts among regional. Tribal historical preservation officers, or THPOs, or TPOs, as they're called, archaeologists and historians. The publications are available. On the SHC webpage, and somewhere at the Town Library and the Old Town Hall. These sources, these resources are available to the public, and the Planning Board may direct the applicant developer to them, and just as a side note, of course, I, I have a research background in, in social science. And have done extensive research since 1990 on native peoples. In Latin America, but also here. You know, in my work, basically, involved anthropological research, having received probably the most prestigious anthropological grants available. When a grant foundation anthropological grants. And, and, this is the kind of experience, I guess, that I bring to this particular capacity. And, and just as a side note as well, I happen to have a, I guess, a personal interest in this, since my own identity. Has very, very deep Native American roots. In Latin America, although I am of Scottish ancestry. And those who count the genetic quotient, I'm about 40, 45% Native American. In any case, if the Planning Board is agreeable, the SHC will meet in the coming weeks to generate a more specific proposal to be submitted to the Planning Board. Possible areas of participation collaboration might include the following. Access to development sites, when possible. Participate in special permitting process, including dialogues with applicants and consultants, review development plans and consultant reports. Fourthly, retain an independent consultant for the SHC. And the list could go on, and present the SHC's findings at public hearing and in writing. And that's the extent of my presentation.
Wow.
I make a motion that the Planning Board will hear a more detailed proposal.
Well, before, before you go there, you know, I think we were thinking that it would be helpful to have a conversation, a back and forth conversation, to flesh out what will work best, you know, kind of rather than us taking a stab at it and trying to figure out the best process. You know, now that we've sort of introduced this idea, we've kind of wanted to have this dialogue with the Planning Board.
Well, I'll, I'll jump in, if, is it Deacon, you want to just chat for a little bit, is that okay?
That's, I, I think discussion is the order of the evening.
Okay.
We have plenty of time here. Went to the document pretty fast.
So, I guess I'm, I'm intrigued. By it, I, I like it, I think, for two reasons, one, I mean, you guys are another town committee, so, you know, I hadn't thought of it like that, this until now, but, you know. Just like we would look to the Board of Health, for example, for consultation, or the CONCOM, that. You know, in certain regards, in certain elements of development stuff, having your historical either perspective, or, you know, it's, it's in your bellywork to look at some of these things, so, I think that's, it is helpful, you know, you're a town committee, and you have expertise, so why wouldn't we turn to you in that regard? And then I think the other part is, it does seem like. You know, if it's a, if it's a collaborative advisory kind of role, where, you know, we, we could use input, because no, no one's got enough time, so we should all play to our strengths. If there's things that we can ask for some information gathering or perspective or whatever, and I mean, what I got from what you said, Henry, is more that. In terms of the delivering a report, that, you know, if, if we said, just like we would say to an outside consultant, give us your perspective on, you know, water flow, that you guys could sort of give, give a perspective on historical impact, you know, and that's, that's gonna be really important, so, if that's, if that's, if what I heard is accurate, I think it's intriguing, I'd be open to that.
Thank you.
I think what we can also do is, is provide feedback around, you know, what, what we believe might constitute an appropriate investigation. And data gathering for the Planning Board.
What do you mean?
Makes sense.
Can you say more, Mira?
Well, um. You know, the solar zoning bylaw has a number of requirements, but there's also some vagueness built into it. Which might be open for interpretation, and, and it'll be up to the Planning Board to, to interpret what is sufficient, and. You know, the, the Historical Commission may be able to provide some feedback about at least our perspective. With, with the understanding that the Planning Board makes the final determinations.
I was gonna say, we're clearly, with the understanding that we have only an advisory capacity, and of course. In that sense, it's. Free information that we could provide with no strings attached, at least that's my understanding, and hopefully. It, it, it will support the work that you're doing.
I guess, the other, the other thing I would just say, I mean, I know it came up, you know, the previous round with the, the native sites, but I think this could also be. Relevant to any historical. Elements of a development, you know, solar or not, native or not, is that correct?
That's right. This is Mary Lo, that's my understanding too, Michael.
I have a question.
Please, Nathan.
With regard to sites that would be kept confidential with the interest of. Protecting them, and then, you know, with our recent notice from the, you know, Attorney General, looks like they, you know, approved the zoning law, but kind of gave us a lot of cautions, particularly pertaining to Massachusetts. General law that says something along the lines of, you know, the town shall not. You know, make a bylaw that prevents the development of a, you know, a solar development without, you know, some kind of due reason, you know, for public health or well-being. So, if we were to run into a situation, be it with solar, and, you know, well, particularly with solar, as, as the way that the law applies there, how would you navigate that sort of circumstance, if we were, you know, to be advised, hey, you know, there's. You know, something, you know, on the site, but we can't really talk too much about it, because we want to keep it confidential, how, how does that? You know, what's the approach there?
Is that a question for the Historical Commission, or are you just?
I, yeah, I think so.
Do you want me to?
I think, I think the Planning Board has.
Can I?
Yeah, I thought you were starting to talk.
Yeah, go.
Okay, I had to change rooms, because I'm taking care of my granddaughter. I mean, I think that that's gonna be the, the task of the Planning Board, to decide. How to. Enforce the spirit of the bylaw, including protecting if there are discovered any historical or cultural resources in a negotiation with the developer. And. You know, based on past experience, I think that that involves a dialogue. And the use of consultants, and, you know, the Planning Board may have to do its own due diligence, and trying to decide what seems reasonable and isn't unfairly regulating an applicant.
Yeah, can I put it just as asterisk for something, for maybe a discussion for next month, Deacon? I don't want to get us too far off, but, to Nathan's point, you just reminded me, I, I, it would be really helpful for us to have a conversation about that report from the AG, because my general sense is whoever wrote that didn't read four years ago when it was approved, like, they should have only been commenting on the new part. But like, the things that they held us to task for, Nathan, was stuff that the Attorney General already approved four years ago, and it was like they were backtracking on that stuff, so, you know, it, it felt like someone who had, didn't have context, because a lot of what they said, we'd all, we've already, we. Because a lot of what they said, we'd all we've already we passed that one four years ago. So it'd be really helpful to sort of.
Well, I don't remember the exact details, but but when the previous bylaw was approved. They expressed reservations even then.
Right, but it was approved, it seemed like we were sort of.
Oh, yeah.
Being held to task for something that like, hey, you guys still can't do this, but they already said we could.
Well.
Anyway, it's it's if you're getting getting clear would be helpful, I've read that it was really weird to read it.
I would have put it on the agenda for this time, but that one came in late.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I just I wouldn't have brought it up, but Nathan reminded me and I thought it was worth mentioning.
I'll definitely put it on for next time because we could be going over it.
Yeah.
But may I say one thing?
Okay, Mary Lou and then Henry.
Yes, there's a Massachusetts general law that that I researched heavily and. For Nathan, it's M G L, chapter one fourteen, section seven. If if you look that up, that, you know, that 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 might be helpful. Yeah, that that's all I wanted to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, in response to Nathan's question, I think the from our perspective. It it does really, we follow the same protocol anytime, anytime. Restricted information about certain sites is is is. Shared. Right? We assume that the planning board will follow the protocol that it not be made public. At least that that's the understanding. And of course, this is something that we'd have to remind people of as as we move through it. It's just a protocol that we always, and there are ways to get around it too, I mean, the ways to set of. Singling out something that without specifying where it is exactly. Although ultimately, yes, in in a development, it will become an issue ultimately, the the exact location will become a question.
I think that I think the issue for the historical commission is that. We have, although other committees, town committees are subject to the public records. Law, meaning that any data they collect becomes a public record. The historical commission has the authority to. Take sensitive information and sequester it in a confidential locked, secure setting. That isn't part of the public record if it involves, you know, culturally or historically sensitive sites. Or archaeological sites, so that is something that distinguishes the historical commission a little bit from other town committees that might be collecting information.
Thank you.
Doesn't mean that automatically everything is confidential, but we have the authority to designate certain things if we decide that they're sensitive. And then we would. I don't know if we actually have a security plan set up with the Massachusetts Historical Commission, Henry, and I'm not really, I I don't think we did.
No, we don't.
When we were on the commission, I was on the commission before, but that is certainly something we can establish.
Yeah.
If it.
So if if you're operating within the context of a historic commission meeting. Keeping your own records and data and minutes and things like that, I can see where you you'd be able to perhaps do that, but. Not sure how it would be done in the context of a planning board public hearing, which is subject to the open meeting law.
And that it may not be possible.
Just a follow up question. So so in terms of the research that you would do, like, I do like the idea of we're having a conversation before anything happens, I think that's helpful, so. You know, my guess is, you know. Some of you are bringing expertise and research, but you also, I mean, I think one of the benefits is being able to tap other resources, you know, whether it's consultants or historians or whatever, so. You know, whether it was native or not native, can you just sort of talk through like? The information gathering options that are out there, like if we said a developer's coming with a project. And there's potential historical impacts or so we think. Like, are there? You know. Let's use the Native American ones, are there, you know, ways that you would reach out or non-native that you would reach out just to get a sense? I mean, I like the idea, I'm just curious.
What I could say, what I could say about that is that. We know of and have some relationships with many, if not most of the avocational archaeologists. In the region that have been exploring CSL, some of them have formal or informal relationships with tribes, we have. Some relationships and contacts with tribal historic preservation officers. Folks at Nolombeeka and and other people who are knowledgeable scholars, so we have a number of different avenues for. Getting information and consulting.
Okay.
Would you agree with that, Henry, you think?
Yeah, I I would agree, but also I think. An awful lot of attention is put on archaeologists, whether in fact, a lot of the really interesting research that's coming out is historical. There are historians that are looking at this and in the last ten years, you've got lots of studies. That, you know. Shed a lot of light on 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 the what's on the land, history, its meaning. It's it's relation to existing native people. That kind of thing.
And I would say that would include anthropologists as well, not just strictly archaeologists.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's how many historians, yeah.
And so 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 an historian's analysis of. Would would do what in? How would that how would that change? How we dealt with a project? I mean, if you're not, I mean, is there a particular piece of land that needs to be saved based on historians' research?
Well, I don't know that we've, go ahead.
Yeah, no, no, historians would add to this is a very systematic. Assessment of documents. You know, whether they be official documents, could be land deeds, could be. A variety of narratives that exist out there that were have been around, people have not looked at them systematically. Regarding particular areas. Also, the oral history of of many native groups. They all have a great deal of information, particularly since it has been difficult to ascertain. The exact archaeological basis of many of these sites. This is where I think a lot of the interesting work is coming through. And as you requested, how would it affect a particular, you know, well, it it could have some relation, I suppose, if if indeed. Some historian has actually studied a particular part of 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 the region. In all of its different aspects, like official, unofficial, they do whatever.
So, Deacon, what I would add to that is that there are people in in the region. Who have intimate familiarity with stone structures all over Chutesbury. Some folks have documented them in their own private archives and mapped them even. Those individuals may not want to publicize that because it's sensitive. Tribes may not want to publicize that because they consider that information sensitive. However, we may be in a position where we can consult with. People who are knowledgeable and help the planning board sort of navigate. And interpret what information comes out around surveys. Land surveys to try to see what looks meaningful and maybe worthy of being preserved, we may not ever. Be able to say with ultimate clarity who constructed a stone structure, if it was constructed by humans. Or when it was constructed, but our hope is to try to figure out what might be important enough. To be possibly preserved in a development project if it's at risk of being.
Yeah. I mean.
I mean, that was.
Stone structures are stone structures are easy to understand, I was just trying to get at, is there, I mean. Is is there, are there are there concerns for preservation of of things other than stone structures? That that would be revealed by historians?
Well, sometimes, and I would say I wouldn't say just historians. Deacon, I would say that scholars, I would, I wouldn't just narrow it to say it's just historians, anthropologists. But often, pre-European stone structures are in relationship to natural features, they don't just. Exist in random patterns out in the woods, they usually have some sort of pattern in relation to each other. As well as to natural features like wetlands, springs, waterways. And people who are knowledgeable about these cultural traditions can help interpret those patterns based on. You know, oral history. Real, you know, ritual practices, mythology, things like that.
Just what I'm trying to get at is is that the the research that's been done. You're referencing stones, you're referencing stone structures. And that's easy, stone structures are relatively easy to to understand, I'm just trying to get at. Do the do the do the historians or the archaeologists identify things other than stone structures that that need preservation?
Well, that's what I was saying is that sometimes it's the relation that, I mean, the thing that's most obviously noticeable in Chutesbury are stone structures. Okay, because. You know, that's about all that remains on the surface, but they're often in relationship to other kind of features like wetlands. And so it may be that a wetland, you may see, for example, ceremonial stone landscape that's in a relationship to a wetland.
Can I make a stab, I think it's a decent question because I'm curious, I mean. I I like the idea because you guys have more expertise, I definitely. I'm not a historian, but it seems like, just looking at the solar bylaw, you know, it's written there is. There's definitely stone structures and native sacred sites, but there's also, you know, Western artifacts, whether it's. Homestead foundations or things like that. And so, you know, I guess what I would say is. You guys are the, you know, the historic commission, not necessarily the native historic commission, and so. What would be helpful because especially since it's in the bylaws is that. If there's a developer that wants to look at a piece of land for development that.
Exactly.
Start the the starting point is that it's wide and it says, are there historical and cultural regardless of whether it's Western or native? And then and then talk about the meaningfulness, because I mean, there's generations of Western settlers who are here. And so just sort of having that be the starting point, and then after that, it can narrow down, so you could say, well, there's this or there's that. But I guess I would ask you to sort of. Use that as the starting point, because what we want to do is be able to identify and preserve. Anything that has historical or cultural, well, not necessarily preserve it, but but be aware of it, because I, what I see the value add is. If we know that there's land that's considered for development, if we can be aware that there's even. Potential issues related to that, Western or native, that then we can sort of go with eyes open and have a conversation. And that's better than playing catch up. So I don't know if Deacon, that's where you're going, but that's what I was thinking about.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get a handle on what we're on on what we're trying to do, I mean, because that's all.
Let me ask a question to Steve, would. Would this advice and research be applicable to an individual landowner who wants to just build a house on their property? In other words, what defines development?
Well, I would say that that's completely voluntary, if it's just simply. You know, a landowner who's developing their property for whatever purpose they're developing. The only place that I'm aware of in the zoning, I guess, the the open spate or the. There are, you're going to correct me about what's in the zoning bylaws besides the solar zoning that specifically talks about. Historical resources and cultural resources, is there another provision in the zoning besides the solar bylaw?
Not that I recall.
Yeah, so you know, it would be voluntary and a part of a landowner unless they were falling in the special permit for a solar project.
Yeah.
But although there could be, there could be a special permit required for flexible frontage, you know. Developments of shared drive. You know, there it could be several applications, I'm just curious. In those situations, would. Would you, would you all be part of that process?
Well, in the for the special permit. Portion of the zoning bylaw, isn't there? There's some criteria and one of the criteria is, is there anything that's of cultural or historical significance? I I feel like that is maybe.
It's the documentation section.
Is it documentation?
Yeah.
Okay, there is something in the general zoning that for special permits, I think.
Oh, that part I don't know here, we can look.
I I think it was.
Yeah, there there is, it relates to things like stone walls and and I can't remember off the top of my head, I don't have it in front of me. But there are some of those.
And certainly that would be, I think, a place where we could have an advisory relationship, advisory role. If if we were aware of it and if, you know, that's what we kind of want to have as a relationship with the planning board where. You know, you could let us know and we could, you know, make ourselves available to come to meetings.
Yeah, if there is a connection, if we we get. Some some of this information ahead of time, we can actually look into it. The archaeological research course is not. How should we say? Yeah, it's not exhaustive. If you look at it, there has been some work done, it's, you know, it's growing, et cetera. It's complemented by historical research, which asks slightly different questions. Looks at different data. Documents, the fact that people have been writing history, you see, since the arrival of Europeans. Different people write, you know, various kinds of documents that tell us something about the land. Its use, its significance. If a stone structure is related to a particular. Water site, which is very typical, by the way, within native cosmology, north or south. Water sites are always very, very important related to stone structures, whether you go to the Andes with the Incas or the Maya. Or the, you know. The local Nipmuk or Abenaki, they 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 all have similar cosmology in terms of how they orient. Their structures. And typically it has to do with the course of the heavens, sun, the moon, et cetera, these are all. Part of the knowledge base that that many people who study this, whether they be historians or archaeologists or cultural anthropologists. They all share the same basic set of precepts when they go into the field, they're looking at different data, they complement one another. And I think that's a good thing, you know, because we don't have, like, like anything else, we don't have. Comprehensive assessment of all of these things, but rather we have, you know, different inputs from different areas and I think we were. I didn't mention, but there are a number of people on the committee. Some of them on the line right now, but they they all have a a an interest in historical, both historical issues, historical. Cultural remnants. And both. Pre-colonial and post-colonial, you know, they're they're a bit of both, you know, it's not only pre-colonial.
Can I just jump in there, Henry, just as a segue? To answer Steve's question, I looked it up, so under special permits, there's the review criteria, so it's nine point three dash two B. And I think this is where it's helpful, it says. In order to approve a special permit, the S P G A, so the Special Permit Granting Authority. Shall also make specific written findings that the proposed use with or without conditions, and number two is. Is compatible with surrounding uses, if any, and protective of the natural, historic and scenic resources of the town. So I think, so generally speaking. If the planning board is the Special Permit Granting Authority. And we're supposed to be having written findings about. And we're supposed to be having written findings about things that are consistent and compatible in terms of natural, historic or scenic resources for town. It would be sort of convenient to turn to you and sort of be able to say, regardless of, you know, what the context of the history is, is. Are they compatible? So I just, so it's it's in there under special permits.
Can't promise we'll come up with everything, anything. We can try.
Michael, can you give me the citation for that so I could put in the minutes?
Nine point three dash two B.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, Michael. I knew it was in there somewhere.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we thank the Historical Commission and move along, please? In our agenda?
Yeah, let's.
Can I ask one other quick question, Jeff, real quick? I mean, what strikes me is if you were to be involved, you know, someone had said, can, if we knew in a timely fashion. I mean, the earliest that we would really know is when someone submits a special permit. So like, you know, last month we had this presentation, but there's nothing submitted. So it seems like that, if we were to be able to, once it's formally submitted, becomes a public document anyway. We would just have the intention of sharing it with you. Does that seem like what you were thinking?
I guess, yeah. I guess the experience has been on the on the Historical Commission that we'd get word about a project. And by that time, it's already been through the hoops. And it's, you know, it's relatively, we don't have a lot of time really to do much.
Well, one thing I would say with respect to that is that the the ANRADs have been worked on. And and I would suggest that the Historical Commission find out what it can in the ANRAD areas. I mean, because, I mean, those ANRADs are a tell.
There's two new ANRADs that have been submitted.
May I say something, Deacon?
Please, and let's be quick, because I mean, I think.
This is just a quick thing that that you you are, there might be a couple of monk caves as well. That we've discovered. You know what they call the monk caves, that under the tree, those, and you can go in. It's really beautiful. Those are local. We we.
Yes, I've never seen those. Never.
Cool. You can, a whole person can fit inside.
Okay, so, so can we wrap this up and and we'll hear from you again? I mean.
Look forward to hearing from you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Great.
Night.
Night. Okay. I made note in the agenda of Michael's disclosure document.
Did we jump over education and guidance for landowners?
Well, there aren't any here.
Oh, okay. That makes for a shorter meeting.
Although I have to say, I've been talking to a few of them on the phone. And I encouraged at least one to show up tonight at our meeting. So I don't see that.
Oh, is this? So this is a reference to the emails that we get where someone says, I wanted to do such and such, and can you tell me? That's what we're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This was a Cooleyville Road one, which. Could very well involve us in terms of either a flexible frontage proposal or a. Open space design. But the person is not here tonight. So anyway.
Jeff, what's your sense? Like, when you, when you and Deacon get these emails, it seems like some of them actually. You know, proceed and are interested, but some of these are like just shots across the bow. Where people are just sort of trying to get random information, whether they live in town or not. Is that a correct perception?
Yeah, there's no guarantee they're gonna, they're gonna come in because, you know. They'll find things out that how tough it is to do something or how many, how much permitting is involved or how much cost or time. And they may lose interest.
Or sometimes they get, they get an answer that that just satisfies them.
Yeah, but but there seems to be an uptick in 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 people inquiring about. Development in Schutzeberry. So.
And at this point, we're getting, it's from our previous conversation, it seems like Deacon, you catch them and then you can figure out who's best to answer them. This sort of the approach.
Yeah, sort of, yes.
Yeah, as best you can.
Yeah, both Jeff and I talked to this, the fellow we're referencing, Jeff's referencing now.
Okay.
I just, and just to add to that, I actually, some of them have just comes just to, instead of to the planning board in general. I've been coming just to the planning board LUC email, which I think is a problem, but I've been forwarding those to Jeff.
Yeah, I I think I've gotten two of them from you, right? At least two.
Yeah, there's two.
Is is that, is that because on the website it has your email for further information?
It, my email is listed under the planning board under Deacon's name also, yeah. So I don't know if that's something that wants to be changed or more clarified. Because I I've been just not just saying, I'm putting you in touch with the the actual people who have experience in this.
Well, I can change the listing if we figure out what we want to tell people. If it goes to planning, Jeff, you always see it. Deacon, you you eventually see it, I think, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I I think my name is, my email is included in that list, so I I would see it. I'm not sure, are we all on that? Do we all get that?
On planning? No, not everyone's on planning.
Oh, no?
They can be. It's just a matter of who wants to be. I think currently it's you and Deacon and me and Nathan and then Tessa. So I don't think Robert, Linda or Steve gets the planning ones. So if you want to, I can add you guys. Yes, Linda, you want to get added? Okay.
Why don't you add me too, Michael?
Sure.
Even if, even if I, even if I am the designated answer to people's questions. It's good to know that the questions are coming in, you know, for all the members to know that the questions are coming in and and take note of it.
Yeah. So so I, did you want to be on the, on the planning board forwarding, Robert?
Yes.
Okay, oh, yeah, definitely add everybody then. That's great.
Okay.
And I don't know if you, if you want to take down the LUC email or 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 not. Or just clarify what it is for and what it isn't for.
Well, if 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 everyone's getting it, I could just substitute planning for yours. And this way, you know, whether Deacon's going to respond or, you know, Jeff. I guess it'd be up to your discretion who responds, but this way you won't be getting, I mean, you'll get them, but you won't, you won't be on the hook for responding.
Only one, yeah, because I I don't, would hate to miss something where I I wasn't catching that it needs to be forwarded.
Who do I talk to to get my name on this website?
Say again?
Who do I talk to to get my name on this website?
I could do it for you. I'm pretty sure I could.
I thought you were already getting forwarded.
No, on the right hand side, there's a list of the members. What are you talking about, Nathan, right?
This one I'm talking about, yes.
Yeah, yeah. I should be able to do it. If not, it's the web committee who adds. It's just a contact reference. And then people get assigned to different pages based on their committee membership. So, but if I'll add you and if I can, I'll include you in my request to have you added. How's that sound?
That sounds good. I can, I can make a request to the committee if that's.
Yeah, yeah, go for it. It's just the web committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's go back to to Michael's disclosure.
Okay, woo hoo. So this is short and sweet, but. In lieu of the upcoming special permits that we expected somewhere. Oh, I guess it was probably about two weeks, two weeks ago, something like that. I started doing a little research because in two thousand and five, during the whole Wheelock process, when I was not on the planning board. Myself.
Two thousand and five?
Fifteen. Sorry, yeah. Myself and a few other people got trespassed by Kohl's, so. I knew that was the case, but I couldn't. I couldn't find the the notice that said that's what it was. So I ended up talking to. The Franklin County Sheriff, who's supposed to have it, and they didn't have it. And I talked to the police department in Schutzeberry, they didn't have it. So I talked to Michael Peel's Law Office, because since they represent Kohl's, they had a copy and I got a new copy of it. Basically, trespass from all of Kohl's property everywhere in the universe. And so the question I had that I posed to Becky, just for clarification, was now that I'm on the planning board. Does that mean that I can't go on site visits on Kohl's? And it's interesting, because when I was looking things up, at least in statute, if you're on the Concom, you can't be banned. From going on private land in the course of your responsibilities. There's nothing like that in the planning board context. Although I think even Concoms, it doesn't matter. So Donna basically determined that. Because I was trespassed prior to being on the planning board, the trespass notice trumps my planning board responsibilities. And then Becky suggested I check in with Ethics Commission to find out what I should do. And so the Ethics Commission folks basically had me. File a disclosure form, which I sent to Deacon, and officially it has to go to the town clerk. So Grace got it and then Becky got a copy. But. What what the Ethics Commission basically says, if a reasonable person would think that I had a conflict of interest because I was trespassed. Then I needed to fill out the form. It doesn't mean that I think I have a conflict of interest. Because I think I can still make objective and fair decisions regardless. But this form is basically just to sort of say that, yes, I was trespassed from Kohl's and I serve on the planning board. And if projects come down the pike in the future, everyone should know that. So I think when we get the special permit request in, I'll probably just repeat this, but that was the form, so everyone knows.
Michael, Michael, I'm I'm a little confused. Does that mean then, assuming you have no conflict of interest on any other project? That has nothing to do with Wheelock, you're still forbidden to go to trespass on Kohl's property?
Correct.
And there's no way around that?
The only way around it is, Michael Peel told me I can write a letter to send it, ask it to rescind it.
It happens.
The interesting thing, Steve, though, is that unlike, like, I don't have to recuse myself. So this is basically saying I can participate fully and everyone just is aware of the fact that I'm trespassed.
I see.
So if I didn't fill out this form, that would be more problematic, apparently. Because what I, what I told the the person from the Ethics Commission is, I don't see this as a conflict. I, you know, I do take my planning board responsibilities seriously and I would look at things objectively and fairly, which is what you're supposed to do. And by filling out this form, you actually have to attest to that. So this is just putting information in the public realm.
Okay. No, I understand now. The short story is, you can participate in. In the planning board meetings that relate to these other properties, you just can't physically go on Kohl's property.
Right, you guys will be in my eyes.
Yeah, I got, okay.
Well.
Get a GoPro, you know, and then.
Or a drone.
Get a feed on it.
What if the planning board were to write a a letter to Cindy Jones? Asking that you be untrespassed for the purposes of planning board business. And making note of the fact that that you're not recused, you're going to be able to vote anyway on these things. So, you know, wouldn't it be better if Mr. De Kiera had full information? To base his votes upon? Don't you think it would be in everyone's best interest if that were the case?
That's a great idea. And they'd be supervised visits, because you guys would be along with me.
Yeah, I mean, we would escort you. We'd have one planning board member on each side of you.
I couldn't run for it.
I don't see any downside to doing what Jeff just suggested.
I like that idea.
Yeah, no, I I agree. And what would be the, what what should we think about for timing on that letter? I mean, we don't have any, we don't have any applications yet.
I think just anticipation, just, you know, now into the future, as long as I'm on the planning board, it seems like it'd be relevant.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, actually, it's better if it comes sooner rather than later.
Yeah, great idea, Jeff.
So it's not reactive.
Yeah. It's 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 in her best interest that you you vote with full knowledge of what's out there.
What do you think, Deacon?
I've, I've.
You're gonna buy it?
I'm a, I'm a little, I'm amused by Jeff's comment that it's in Cindy's best interest. Because I'm not entirely sure she will see it that way.
She may not, but you know, as I said before, there's no downside.
I agree with that too.
You know.
With that too.
I can't get more trespassed.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I thank you guys.
Well, let's talk, let's, who's going to write this letter? Should we? Should, should we? Should we look at it at next meeting?
Jeff's already writing it, it looks like.
Huh?
It looks like you're already writing it.
I'm, I'm, I'm writing, Jeff's not going to write this.
Look, why don't we, why don't?
Somebody can write the frigging letter, not me, come on.
Michael, Michael should write it.
I can ghostwrite it.
No, why don't you? I think you could do the best job.
Can we, can we ask?
I could write it.
Yeah, there we go.
Whoever writes it, shall, shall we review it at our next meeting?
Yeah.
Is someone volunteering?
I'm I'm volunteering because I'm making everybody go through the hoops, so I might as well do the work. So I'll I'll write it and I'll send the draft to you, Tess, and you can, as well as everybody else, so we can bring it to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, well, I, I should note that. I was sent in a butters notice for the ANRAD on the property near Penny Kim's. I, my sense is that I have a really good case that that I shouldn't be recused. And. The the parcel in question is a seventy-five acre piece with a mass fish and wildlife. Conservation restriction on it. My house is is more than a mile from the site. I don't, I don't think I have a conflict of interest here.
How are you going to appeal that, Deacon?
Well, I mean, in in previous conversation with Jeff. He has mentioned to me that you can get. A real estate appraiser to say. That you don't have a recusal problem, that that it's, it's not, it's not important enough that you need to be recused. And I think that in my case, it's really clear, because there's no development possibility on the property. Because of the, because of the conservation restriction. And I'm more than a mile from there. So, I mean, all I can do is cut wood and and recreate on this land. I'm not.
Well, the reason I ask actually is, I just, I've, just today, I got a butters notice for. I, what I assume is the Pratt Corner East ANRAD. And, you know, from my research a month or two ago, I realized that last time around for Wheelock, I was, I told that I was a butter. But I don't think I'm in a butter, because I'm in a butter of an a butter, but I'm more than three hundred or five hundred feet away from the the property line. So I I think this is inaccurate. I think it was inaccurate last time, but I didn't know that. So I was just curious, have to check with somebody, because I don't want to be in a butter if I'm not going to be in a butter. Like, if I'm not really in the butter.
I believe it's three hundred feet.
Yeah, and that's in a butter of an a butter.
But if you're situated greater than three hundred feet, I'm not sure why.
Yeah, no, I'm definitely more than three hundred feet. Probably more than.
I don't know, I don't know how you fix that, but, I mean, it sounds, I mean, if, I mean, if all you say is right, and I have no reason to doubt it. I mean, a mistake has been made.
Yeah, I'll, I can follow up.
Yeah. And I will follow up some more on mine too, because I, I, I really don't think I have a conflict. I mean, I could only, I mean, the land has very little economic value. It's five hundred dollars an acre, you know.
Well, Deacon, mostly, you're you're remote from it. You're not going to see it or perceive it. It's not going to have any, any effect on the value of of your home, your homestead.
Right, and it's, and and the value of, the value of the parcel in question is is already minimal because of the conservation. Right. And it's, and, um, and the value of, the value of the parcel in question is, is already minimal because of the conservation restriction. There's, there's no more value you can take away. I mean, the, the trees are worth is.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good argument too.
Well, I, I, I note that and, um, and I, I will try to do something later. I mean, should they proceed with that one, which, which we think may be too wet anyway? I mean, I, I mean, that's the one they were, that's the one they were talking about for water supply.
Yeah, that corner piece there.
Yeah, I, I, I had no idea I was that close to it.
That's the Baker Road one that they're talking about moving away from?
No, this, um, this is the Anrad that's kind of behind Montague and Leverett Road.
Yeah.
In, in the, in the crook between those two roads, it's sort of.
Northwest of that intersection.
Yeah.
Okay. We had conversation last meeting about, uh, the difficulty of coping with a lot of special permits. I, I would bring up again, the, uh, the idea of, of creating the possibility of associate members. And, and I think this, I think that's a relatively straightforward thing to, to, to cope with the possible recusals that we're, we're, we may be facing.
Right. So I would support that. I mean, it's, it's a amendment to the bylaws. So it might be a matter of drafting them and discussing them and just have them ready for town meeting. Is that correct?
Exactly. So, exactly. So, and my, my guess is that there, that there are, um, there are, there are bylaws for, for other communities already written that, that would be, um, helpful to us.
Yeah. Well, I'd be willing if, to do a little research and sort of report back, you know, and start the process, sort of like how we do, you know, this would be infinitely easier than the marijuana one, but at least we could find out what are the towns do and just sort of start that conversation next month.
I think, I think it's relatively straightforward. It ought to be relatively straightforward.
Yeah, I agree. It's, it should be pretty straight, you know, just figure out how many we want and what the process is and, so if no one else is wanting to do it, I can, I'd be happy to start that.
Good.
Is there, just because of trying to make clarification for the minutes this time around? Associate members for the board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think the concept is if, you know, you've got the elected members and then associate members can be, I think, appointed by the board and then they're sort of pinch hitting. So that if there's not enough people to get a quorum, that the board can still conduct its business.
Yeah. And this is, this is especially key in the case of special permits and recusals because, I mean, getting adequate attendance in, in the face of a board that's, that is down eligible members to deal with a special permit is really a problem. I mean, I, I made a lot of phone calls during Wheelock just to make sure we could round up enough people and not have people very many meetings.
Yeah, it gets difficult when the hearings are extended.
Yeah.
Month, month after month after month, and you have to keep the same set of, of eligible voters. Very hard.
And you only get one, and you're only allowed one absence that you have to make up through listening to the recording. It's, it's really a problem and I, I wind up being an asshole to people. And leaning on them.
Thank you for the clarification.
Deacon, did you jump over road solar site?
Did the minutes reflect what Deacon just said?
It won't be said anything of language.
You can clean it up, Tessa.
I thought that, I thought the public wouldn't have to have, I mean, they could hear the recording, but, uh.
Yeah, clean it up, but.
So Deacon, what's this road solar site mean?
I'm sorry, I.
It's from the, whatever email I got sent today that had like the agenda on it.
Oh, maybe I, I broke it up. On the original, it was winner, a butter to possible Leverett.
Oh, got it.
I think in my rush to send out the email, I broke it up into two because it had a dash in it.
Got it. Okay, that explains it. Okay.
Yeah. Catching that there. It was like, oh, there's a dash here. So.
I was imagining some mobile solar thing driving up and down these roads or Schutze.
That was part of the.
That's cleared up.
If you looked at the earlier email with the agenda listed, that would not be true.
Got it.
Okay. And then, um, I, I threw on municipal vulnerability preparedness, um, just because we've been talking about it. I know we're, um, I know we're, um, we're looking at a very busy year. I don't know how much we can do on this. I just want to make sure we don't forget about it.
Yeah. I, I appreciate that, Deacon. You want me to just take five minutes or so? Just.
I would like that.
Okay, great. So, you know, just revisiting the, the report that Fussin O'Neil did, and then I sort of excerpted for us. You know, as I mentioned last time, they broke it up into high priority, medium priority, low priority projects for the whole town in terms of municipal vulnerability preparedness. And, you know, given especially what Deacon had said, I thought, well, let me just look at the high priority ones that were relevant for planning board. And, you know, of course, this doesn't mean we can or will do any of this stuff, but just to sort of highlight it. I think there's five things that touch zoning of the planning board in some regard. The first one's a huge lift, but you know, in a quiet year, we should probably be thinking about this. Updod, updating the town's master plan to address the full range of zoning related climate change mitigation and adaptation issues such as limiting development in higher hazard areas, incorporating green infrastructure and new development plans and encouraging low impact development practices. So I think that's just the, I mean, far reaching, high level, really important. The second one is establishing a regulatory review process for future developments to address impervious cover and manage storm, warn or stormwater runoff. Review and update applicable town regulations and bylaws to improve stormwater management mitigated flood risk. You know, and we, like, we had that conversation for the solar bylaws. It might be just revisiting it. Um, and it might be in there. I'm just not aware of it, but that was, that's number two. The third one is assessing green infrastructure opportunities for stormwater management. So, um, a similar thing, but developing a list of specific priorities. Assess feasibility and cost ranked priority projects. Um, and it means reviewing town regulations. The focus on known problem areas for store right of water from including Lockspont Road, Lake Viola. And some of this is zoning, some of this is maybe, you know, the highway department. The fourth one is, well, this is sort of funny, but work with the planning board and select board to ensure that commercial development remains appropriate to town. And then, for example, grocery stores and food establishments, the idea there is that if you have, you know, crises and we have, you know, storms and stuff, people can't get access to anything. So could we actually encourage that? And then does not lead to forest degradation. And then designate payments to, um, the pilot payments to fund a climate mitigation fund is, is something that got recommended. And then the last one is support incentives that allow for individual homeowners to have self sufficiency off the grid for solar and explore potential regulatory barriers. Incentivize battery storage that home solar installations can still provide power for residents during an outage. So it sort of goes from, you know, resident based regulations to big commercial stuff like the solar to the master plan, which is town wide. So there's, it's fertile ground, you know, really important. I think it's just, you know, being cognizant that this year, the potential for being swamped is high. So I'm not sure how we incorporate this, you know, and sort of keep it top of mind without feeling overwhelmed. But those, those are the five that jumped out to me.
Right. Do we know, do, do we know how far along all the Anrads are?
Miriam referenced this earlier. She's, um, and I guess like two weeks ago I talked to her.
I can help with that.
Oh yeah, you know this stuff.
I'm, I'm on the meetings, uh, on ComCom meetings. Yeah. So there are now six projects, including the Baker Road, which one, which they're probably not going to propose a solar project for, but they still want to complete the Anrad process so that they, I guess they, they have that Anrad completed, um, approved. So six projects, probably going through to submit solar plans for five of them. The five, I think, which you can, might remember that map that Evan Turner put up at the last meeting of the five that they're still interested in. And where that is with, in front of the Conservation Commission is that two of them are the Leverett Road and the Pratt South are brand new. They're going to be opened at this coming meeting this Thursday, but they're not, they're going to be continued. The opening will just be about, we've said aside 10 minutes for each of them. They're just going to be an explanation of the project. Basically, I think how much megawatts it would be where it is, and then set a date to continue it. And then for those two, and then the last, the Pratt East is the one that's actually going to be, has been continued for a while, but it's actually going to be opened. And it's still not the full, it's not, still not a solar project. It's just the Anrad, the delineation of the wetlands that's under discussion. But that's actually going to be opened.
On Thursday, is that getting open?
Thursday. Yeah.
And that's the one that's adjacent to the, the Wheelock track. Pratt East.
It might be.
The northernmost one on Pratt Corner.
I'd have to check on that, but I, yeah, it's 7:30 if you're, if anyone's interested, 7:30 on Thursday.
That would make sense.
Yeah. Pratt South, uh, yeah, Pratt East, yes. Pratt South, new one. Yeah. Pratt East is the one that's going to be opened or like actually discussed.
And that's the first one?
The fact, yes, it's the first one that's actually been, this will be discussed instead of just opened, um, and continued because we have the feedback back from Emily Stockman, who is the independent wetland biologist who was hired to review the, the wetland delineation maps. And they have actually updated the map. So their new maps have been submitted to the Conservation Commission reflecting Emily's documents.
Is that for, is the documentation updated for all six or just?
Just that Pratt East.
Huh.
The only one that has, but they all will be likely have new maps.
Okay.
And if you go on the Conservation Commission website, uh, Penny has put all those Anrads are, are on the website. So you can see them. Download them.
Share them with friends and family.
You can spend hours comparing where the maps were to where they are now.
So I, I have a question.
Yeah.
If, if we get, if the planning board receives four or even five special permit applications at the same time, are we obligated by law to respond to those within the given time that we have? All, all, you know, despite the fact that we're all volunteer board?
Yeah.
And we have no recourse?
No.
Yeah. Well, the thing that we talked about last time, Steve, was this whole idea of hiring a project manager.
Yes.
You know, and I forget some of the specifics of that conversation. I know I, I think I mentioned, you know, Jeff and I were talking about how we talked about the fee schedule. You know, that we could revisit the fee schedule to maybe help pay for some of this stuff, but I don't know if our ability to hire a consultant at the developer's expense would count as a project manager, but that would be, I think, be the, the most viable approach.
Jeff, is that possible? Require the applicant to hire a project manager who works for us?
I'd have to read 4453G again. If anybody wants to look it up, it's chapter 44, section 53G. And that's where we get our ability to, um, where we get our ability to hire consultants. And, uh, there may be some stated purposes there.
And while you're, while, while you're looking it up, the other thing that Michael raised, which I would be in total favor of is raising the application fees.
Well, we've already done that.
Do it again.
Well, what, we, we raised it to a, did we raise it to a thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it's not going to go a long way.
No. It'd be interesting to look at the wording and figure out if there's a, you know how you usually, usually get a volume discount on things? This could be the inverse of that.
Jesus. No, if anything, you'd get a penalty.
No, I know. That's what I mean. You've got to do the inverse. So if you, if you got volume, it's going to cost you more.
Yeah, exactly. Three or more. Why not?
Yeah. It's exponential growth of the fee.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Here's what it says. This is what our bylaw says, and I believe that Joel and I took it right from 4453G, because we mentioned 4453G here. It says, in connection with any application for special permit, the zoning board of appeals or planning board or site plan approval, the board may require the applicant to pay fees in advance to cover the reasonable cost of reviewing such application. Such costs may include staff costs and or consultant fees covering planning, engineering, environmental analysis, wetland delineation, legal review, and other professional and technical services required for a proper and thorough review of the application.
So the answer is yes.
Yeah.
Sounds like it.
Yeah. It's broad enough to cover what we would call a project manager, I think.
Where's that? Jeff, where in our bylaws is that?
9.6.
9.6.
As you said, excuse me, that's backed up by the state statute, right?
Yeah. They, and, and we cite the state statute there.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that may, gives me some small.
Yeah. Yeah, that's how Emily Stockman is, is paid by the Conservation Commission through that, through that statute.
So here's, you know, just so we're not sitting on our heels with this stuff. I guess it's a two, two-part thing. One, if we're a hundred percent confident, we don't have to check with Donna, we might want to just check with Donna, but then once we get clarity that we can do it, we should start looking for someone. So we know, we don't start the search after we've gotten the submissions, but we've done a little, at least we have a candidate pool of who we want to tap. You know, and I don't know if that's, you know, Jeff going to your circles or talking to Becky to find out if there's, you know, I don't, I don't know what the procedure is, but we should start thinking about people since the stuff is likely coming in the next few months.
I would certainly support that.
Yeah. Do you have in mind, Jeff, uh, potential folks who would fit the bill?
Oh my goodness.
Well, i- is this something you could put on your, on your, um,
Yeah.
Your list, you know, that you, where you ask questions to the planning community?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it, it, it would probably be a, a, a town planner with lots of experience from, from, um, busy regulatory environments. You know, handling multiple projects at one time and dealing with all the, the special permit and the record keeping and, um, the deadlines and, um, coordinating consultants and things like that.
Retiree would be good. It's sort of like how the superintendents retire, then they do one district just to keep in the game.
Yep. Yeah. You know, if somebody like Bob Mitchell were around, the former Amherst planning director, I mean, he's a consultant. But, but he lives in Boston. He would be a possibility, actually. He, he might be able to do that, uh, since we're all remote now.
Yeah.
Has he done solar stuff?
I don't know.
Yeah. That would be helpful, just. I mean, I think, you know, the, for, for me, Jeff, of the part that you said that it really is. I mean, I think, you know, the, for, for me, Jeff, of the part that you said that it really is relevant, aside from having some zoning background, it's just being able to manage the flow. I mean, the biggest fear is missing deadlines unintentionally.
Hmm.
And being able to sort of direct us and say, you guys have to talk about this, this next meeting, or else you're screwed.
Yeah, it's, for me, it's, it's not just missing deadlines, but there's going to be each, each special permit application is going to have several moving pieces. And then multiply that times three, four, or five. I'm guessing here how many we might get.
Right.
And the complexity grows.
TESSA will have a tremendous amount of additional work to do with maintaining these files, these, you know, separate files for each project and, and keeping them straight, keeping all the, the hearings straight, you know, whether we've closed one, or whether they're all open, or one's closed, and one's open, the next one's closed. It's, it's, it's going to, it's going to boggle the mind, just, just keeping it all straight and keeping everything on track.
Right. But I, I'm sorry, TESSA, you go.
Oh, I was just going to say, one small thing is that the Conservation Commission does have the ANRAD dates as they're being continued, posted on their website page. So that's one small thing that can be done to keep track of what, which project is being heard, what date.
Yeah, I, I think I would, what I was going to say is although the buck stops with TESSA in terms of, you know, haven't maintained the file and stuff, because what you read, Jeff, includes staffing, if we have to get a consultant to help actually do the work for TESSA, you know, so she's juggling five balls at the same time, she actually, you know, she knows what files got whatever, and people can do it. I think that's, in effect, there is, there is more cost if you submit more projects because one person can't manage it. So, you know, TESSA might get her own administrative consultant.
I, I wonder if some, if some of these fees could go, go to, to funding TESSA, funding additional, I don't know if, TESSA, you have any additional capacity for hours. There are probably limits on the, the time and, and the, the money that can go from, you know, for planning board work. But the amount you do now will increase dramatically if, if we get all this stuff in. So I, I wonder if some of this money can just be funneled into your account.
Jeff, are you, are you suggesting that in addition to a consultant, that TESSA's responsibilities will grow just because of its five different projects?
Yeah, because I don't think we're going to relieve TESSA of her duties and put it all on a consultant to, to do this. It would be a consultant working with TESSA to manage, manage things. But you know, TESSA would continue to do her, you know, her, her job, but I, I just don't think there's enough hours or enough budget right now for that.
Yeah, I, well, let's, let's make sure we talk, we'll talk about the budget at, at the next meeting too. And I think this is going to have to play into it because we may, we may want to ask for a, we may want to ask for a much bigger budget than we've had in the past.
And I do think if we can, we should raise the special permit application fee. I know we raised it, but.
Yeah, I it always seems to make sense.
Well, wait a minute, didn't we put it up to 1,000 for, for a solar, for a major solar?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I thought, I thought, I thought when you did the research that, that, that other communities weren't charging a lot more than that.
Weren't, or?
Weren't, weren't.
Were.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we're not going to be able, I mean, I got from you that we weren't going to be able to say, we weren't going to be able to say to these, to the developer that it's 5,000 per application. I mean, that that was, that a number like that would have been out of the range.
Yeah, I, I thought we were doing pretty good at 1,000.
I know you did.
Can you do a range? At the discretion of the board? I mean, you, you know, because depending on the, you know, they'll all be complex, but one could, one could scale it a little bit.
I, I see a cute little kid. Look at that.
They've been there before.
They get cuter all the time. Look at that.
They should be in bed, but they're, of course, not.
See you. It's good to see you.
Yeah.
You want to say hi?
Hi.
I, I just did a quick search. Is it possible that there's a cap of $1,000 on commercial solar special permits in Massachusetts?
How did you, how'd you come up with that?
I just did a quick look, not an exhaustive look, a really quick look online. And I saw residential cap for, for residential projects, $500 for commercial, $1,000. But don't, don't put too much weight on that. It was quick and dirty.
Well, it'd be worth looking into it a little bit more. But even, you know, even so, like, you know, to the, to Jeff's point about TESSA's time. I mean, it's, it, what our thing talks about is staffing as well. So if our staffing is, we don't have enough capacity, I think we could just get administrative help, you know. So just thinking about noticing, for example, if you have to write five notices and then track the dates when they go in and talk to Deacon for writing it and, you know, times five. So.
Michael, there, there's a special permit fee, but then there's other fees that, from that, that's in our bylaw, that's based on that chapter 43, was it, Jeff, 44?
Yeah, no, I know. That's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm saying we could tap into that.
Yes, yeah. I think that might be just as well to do that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, using, using the 4453G. But I mean, TESSA may want to think about if she has extra time to give. Now, that's, you know, you don't need to say anything now, but, but if we get all these things in and should, should we think about bolstering your hours and our ability to pay you, or would, would we need them, higher additional administrative help?
I think it would be good to get an estimate of what amount of time. I mean, I know it's hard to judge because we haven't, I don't think you guys have gone through this. Well, I guess you have the Wheelock might be a sort of a hint of what it takes.
You should talk to.
We hope not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Linda may be able to give you some insights into that.
But that would, that, I mean, I certainly hope that we don't, none of these is anywhere near as difficult as that one. That was, that's the first experience we've ever had here.
Well, we had no bylaw. We were, we were making it all up as we went.
Yeah, we were making it all up and we were confronted with a situation that was essentially impossible to deal with well.
So Deacon, coming full circle, the capital expense is a new filing cabinet.
Yeah.
So are applications.
Five drawer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it, but I mean, my guess is that, 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 that we should put in, we should, we should really have a much more substantial budget request. Because we're just, we're, somebody's going to have to do a lot more work that, that'll need to be paid for, whether we get, whether we get reimbursed by the developer or not. The work is going to have to be done.
Well, the other way to do it, Deacon, if, is, I mean, if, if you want to contact the FinCom, if they can create a FinCom reserve that's more robust for us to tap into and we know we got it going in?
Yeah, well, I mean, well, in fact, they will, they will give us the money. I mean, we will get the money, whatever.
Yeah, it's good, but I mean, setting, setting the tone and letting them know, hey, this is coming, we're going to get, likely spending a chunk of change, put this aside.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
I still think our first place to go is 44, chapter 44, whatever it was, three.
Yeah, but, but, oh, I agree with that. But, but we're, but whether we get reimbursed or not, the people are going to have to get paid.
I believe, I mean, I would check on this. I believe that they, the applicant actually gives the money and then the accountant creates a special line in the, that is tapped. Like, I don't, I don't believe the town has to give the money upfront and it is reimbursed. My understanding is that the applicant does pay through a line of money, funds that is set up within the town.
So given that, I think, maybe doing the research that I'd suggested that sounds like Jeff might do, of like, looking at potential people, both project managers and administration, because we'd want to be prepared to say, thank you for submitting your special permit. Based on our research, we think we're going to have this need and it's going to cost this much. So please write us a check.
I, I think too that, that the project manager, the consultant, if that person has, has experience with solar projects, that will be very helpful because that person will know what, what sort of heat we can put on the developer and what isn't going to work.
I would think that's essential, Deacon. They have to have experience with solar projects.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, this is, I mean, there, there's a world of stuff we don't know.
Right, right.
But there's probably, there's obviously a lot of developments that have gone in, you know, you know, so we can probably reach out to different bodies of some other towns where there's been other developments that have gone in and see if there's people they worked with that they would recommend, right?
Sort of. I mean, I think one of the challenges, a lot of these developments are in places of small towns like ours, and they, you know, it, there's less capacity. So those sort of get walked over. I think it's, you know, the, the towns Jeff was referring, where you can actually juggle and have professional staff. And then it might be challenging, like, because solar is relatively new. So everyone's sort of learning as they go. But I, I would agree, having that solar background is, would be really helpful.
Well, Jeff, put out a notice on your, on your planning board site.
I will.
What about just general collaboration among board members of all these documents? You know, I know I'm, I'm on the newer side here. I haven't been through any projects with the board yet, right? So like, you know, how does everything get distributed? How do people have access? How do you collaborate?
Good question.
Well, we are limited in our ability to collaborate outside of, right now, by the open meeting law. So.
But informationally, we can, we can do it. Because we can share information. Like, you know, I would say, using the example of the, oh, the subdivision plants, you know, what I ended up doing, you know, was taking pictures on my iPhone, I mean, on my, on my Android phone, of the plans. So they were digitized and then shared them with everybody. Because pre-pandemic, they'd just be in Town Hall. And it was just more challenging. So I think as the documents come, you know, we can share them out. You know, one thing that'd be interesting to consider, which maybe Nathan is where you're going, is, I mean, we could have a repository, you know, because part of the hassle is, if you send something and it is an email, it's an attachment, then you got to go figure out, I know I saw that thing two months ago, but I don't know where it is. But, you know, if, whether the project manager does it, or, you know, one of us creates it, but a place where we can actually have a repository for the documentation that we can, you know, upload it to and see. And it could just be, you know, a Google, you know, Google documents.
Yeah, we can use a Google Drive.
Yeah.
The, the short story, Nathan, is anybody on the board can disseminate information to anybody else on, everyone else on the board, but we can't discuss it unless we have a plan, unless it's at a planning board meeting like this.
Right, right. Yeah, there's no, no deliberation.
Right.
Well, no deliberation in quorum numbers.
Right, deliberation and quorum numbers.
And, and, and no deliberation that occurs in a serial fashion, that.
Right. And a serial fashion would be defined as, you know, I send an email to Jeff, saying, hey, you know, what do you think about this? My thoughts are blah, 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 blah. And Jeff says, okay, yeah, I think about, you know, and.
Then you call.
Yeah.
You, you talk about the same idea, and then he likes it, and then he calls Linda.
And you, you achieve a quorum in, over the course of time. Yeah.
Okay, I've just realized, I've just realized that, that at the beginning of the meeting, we skipped over Ayers, Ayers Halls, A and R. And I think we should get back to it. I mean, I'm surprised they didn't, nobody came.
Yeah, I thought that's why you jumped over it.
Yeah, but, but let's, let's, let's just talk about it now, even without them, because we need to, we need to do something.
And can somebody share that plan up on the screen?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
I minimized it so that I could, it's sideways, which is the only frustrating.
We'll all tip our heads. Thank you, Jeff, for.
That felt good. That was a nice investment. I'll do it this way.
This is, I'm using the new laptop Becky gave me, so it's, it's asking for verification before I can share. So sorry about this. If someone can share it quicker, I'm working on it.
Most disabled screen sharing.
Oh yeah, I can multiple parties. So there, if someone has it faster than I am, can. Okay, wait, I think I got it.
You guys see my screen?
I just started, I think.
Is anyone seeing this?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a.
This is a revised plan?
I think there's the old lot line here, and then they, they made a new one.
All right. The old one is the dashed one?
That's, yes. And I can, I can zoom in a little bit here. Is that better?
It's beautiful.
Revised lot line. Okay, so that's the only change on here. It doesn't affect the frontage, so we have to approve it. There's no, there's no real decision to make here. Frontage is all air. And, and we previously approved all these frontages. And the lots have, have plenty of acreage, even though that doesn't matter. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think the logic is he wants both these lots to, to be able to have, have chapter 61 forestry.
Oh, you mean like 10 acres left over for forestry?
Yeah.
So he wanted to get the, he wanted to add a little, a little land to Lot 1?
So you, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, that's what I think is going on.
Okay. Great. Well, how are we going to approve it? We, we have, we have to vote and then, and then we can, we can vote you to designate, and you can sign it?
That's, that's my thought. That, that's my thought. And then, and then TESSA and I will have to work on getting together, assuming we vote, assuming we vote to do that, then TESSA and I have to get together on producing a, a notice to the registry of deeds that, that we've done that.
And that, now, are there hard plant, hard copies someplace?
I have not gotten them.
Well.
Last week.
Okay, but the, the, the email from, from Ayers Hall said that they were going to be delivered to the town clerk. Now. Yeah.
Okay, well.
So does the, before the vote takes place, does that, does it have to be re-notify? So does the, before the vote takes place, does that, does it have to be re-notified to the public?
No, there, there's none of that for this.
Okay.
Not for anymore.
There, there's no public hearing or notice. So, so why don't I make a motion to approve this? If, if the plans that come in to the Town Hall are the, the same as these plans, and showing the same thing, then I would, I would move to approve these and designate the chair as able to sign for the board on this.
I think, I think it's, I think it ought to be two separate decisions, Jeff.
It does, it needs to be two separate decisions. There's a formal, I can screen share, there's a formal language around the designation of, of someone to sign for the entire board, so I think it should be two separate steps.
Okay, all right, well, so should, should we vote to approve this first?
I believe so.
And just a, just an added note, I don't know if it's, if, if it needs to be paper, but the email that had this attachment had the town clerk copied on it.
Yeah, but, but.
Okay.
Not sure where you're going with that, Nathan.
Well, Jeff was saying, you know, provided that the, you know, plan received by the town clerk is the same as this one, and I'm just saying, well, you know, the town clerk was copied on, on the email that had this plan attached to it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm sure it's, there's, we should, I mean, Jeff's careful to, to, to state that if it is the same, but it will be, you're right about that. It will be the same, they're not gonna, they're not gonna make up something different.
So, um, so, so Deacon, I, I trust you will, you will, you have this, right? You can compare it with whatever the heck comes in, in paper form?
Yeah, I have this on my email, too.
Okay, so I make a motion that the planning board approve this revised A and R plan from Ayers Hall before us that we're looking at.
Okay.
A second.
Who is that?
Michael.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody want to talk about it? Okay, I'll call the roll. Michael?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Steve?
Yeah.
Wake up!
Thank you. And Linda.
Here.
Aye.
Okay, it's, it's, and I, I'm an I, it's unanimous. Okay, and then, in the agenda, the agenda item for the, for designating a, a signer, the, I took the language, like, that language comes from the, from the KP memo about, about signature stuff, so the, the notice to the, the notice to the Registry of Deeds will rely a lot on that language you see in the agenda, and and then Tessa and I'll work out, we'll work out, then, we'll work out the notice, so does somebody want to make a, a motion to, to approve that?
Is this the vote to authorize a single individual, that thing?
Yeah, and, and, and you need to designate a particular individual, too.
Yep, I'll move to authorize Deacon Bonner to endorse plans on behalf of the board for recording in the Registry of Deeds under provisions, general law, chapter 41, section 81P, A and R plans, and 81X subdivision plans.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, anybody want to talk about it?
Who was the second? Sorry. Thank you.
Anybody want to talk about doing that? This'll be useful if we have any more A and R plans, too.
I'd just like to know if you're left-handed or right-handed.
I mean, I'm right-handed. But I'm a lefty. So, so I'll call the roll if nobody's gonna say anything.
Thank you.
Okay, Michael?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
I'm an I. It's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
Great. And Tessa and I'll deal with this, I, I guess tomorrow, is, is that good with you, Tessa?
We can, I'd be happy to talk about it tomorrow, I think I have to, we'll have to talk to the town clerk about it, they might have to see the minutes, so, and it might take me more than tomorrow to get these minutes typed up.
Oh, okay.
On two hours, but I definitely.
In the morning, and we'll get it straight.
We can talk about it, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Want a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to hear that.
I'll want to adjourn.
Okay, okay.
Who was first?
I'm not sure, I'm about to.
I'll second Jeff's.
Okay, okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Well, thank you.
Good meeting, thank you.
Good night, all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.